I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for Pastor Tony Pierce and his invocation from the Baptist Church here. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. Father, we are grateful to you for your goodness to us. As this meeting begins, we pray your blessing upon those who have been elected to lead us here in this community, blessed them with wisdom and strength and all the good qualities that come from you. Thank you for their service here, for the dedication to your community here. Father, we would also remember those who have led us nationally, and especially today, we pray for those who are serving us in the military all around the world. Be with the families of those who are sacrificing so much for those who serve, and thank you for your goodness in this very special season. Pray all this in Jesus' wonderful name. Amen.
Amen. Thank Pastor Pierce from First Baptist Church. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Leger.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
All right, excellent. Welcome, everyone. I get to recognize one of our commissioners that are heading out to spend some more time with family and do some more cool things.
We need to do the special session?
Oh, I do. I'm sorry about that. Thank you. Oh, I see that. I'm sorry about that. Now, did I do the pledge out of order? Do we have to redo the pledge and everything? We're good. Andrew, we're not going to jail yet here. Okay, good. Sorry about that, and jumping right ahead. I'll call to order this special session of our town council meeting. Do a new roll call, or is the old last one count for this one? Good, thanks. All right, item one is consideration of resolution 2011-48 declaring and adopting the results of the special election held on November 8, 2011. And I guess I'll look for a motion on that.
I'll move.
All right, anyone from the public on this item?
No, Mayor.
Thanks. Any discussion on the resolution 2011-14? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor seven zero.
Thanks a bunch. And look for a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, adjourn the special session on with the regular session agenda. And I have nothing to report on the mayor's report. We've done our roll call, and now I get to recognize one of our commission members that are leaving, and he's not going to be able to join us tonight, but I do want to mention and will give him some thanks as well that he can take with him and hang on a wall. Mr. Dick Holper served as planning and zoning commissioner from October 1, 2010 until October 13, 2011. He's a valuable member of the commission who brought his knowledge and capable decision-making to every commission meeting, and the town wishes to thank Mr. Holper for all his contributions while serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we wish him his best, and we'll miss him on our commission, but we'll see him around town, and he's a neat guy. So, thank you, Richard Holper, for serving on our commission. Now, we will move to call to the public. Anyone with speaker cards tonight?
No, Mayor.
Thanks. Now, we have the consent agenda. I'll go through the three items to consider. First one, item is the approval of the town council meeting minutes from October 11, 12, and November 3, 2011. Item two, consideration approving liquor license applications submitted by John Deli, owner agent for the Fountain Hills Deli LLC, Fountain Hills Express Convenience Store. Item three, consideration appealing approving the special event liquor license application submitted by Gene Linzer, representing Fountain Hills Sister Cities Corporation, for the Carnival Ball to be held in Fountain Hills Community Center on Saturday, February 11, 2012, from 5 to noon, to midnight. Will you get a, can I get a motion to approve those?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Dickey.
Aye.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Aye.
Councilmember Leger.
Aye.
Councilmember Elke.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Cantino.
Aye.
Mayor seven zero.
Thanks a bunch. All right, regular agenda item. First item is consideration of resolution 2011-17 renaming the street Avenida Vida Buena to Keith McMahon Drive. Julie.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The Fountain Hills Chamber passed a resolution to honor the late council member Keith McMahon by renaming a street to Keith McMahon Drive. The town council passed resolution 2011-31 authorizing the renaming of Avenida Vida Buena to Keith McMahon Drive. The resolution before you tonight is the final step in the renaming process. If approved, the chamber will be holding a ribbon-cutting ceremony on Tuesday, November 22, at the corner of Fountain Hills Boulevard and the new Keith McMahon Drive to recognize the name change. Keith's sister will be attending the ribbon-cutting, and also, I'd like to offer a thank you to Joe and Debbie Skiin for bringing this forward on behalf of Keith, and they are in the audience this evening. And the street sign is, you can see it up on the boards over there.
Oh, very cool. That looks awesome. All right, thank you very much, Julie. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
All right, council, we've talked about this one before. I'll know where it's at. Look for a motion to move forward on this item.
Mayor, move to approve resolution 2011-47 renaming Avenida Vida Buena to Keith McMahon Drive.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. And the public notices and all those things went through and law enforcement and neighbors, have we got any feedback at all?
Mayor, members of the council, the public notices went out on October 12, and we have not gotten any feedback. They went out to all the utilities, law enforcement, the neighbors, everybody that's affected in that area, and we received nothing back.
Okay. Very good. Anything else, council? Councilmember Cantino.
Yes, I just want to say I feel like Keith deserved more than having a street named after him, and for that reason, I will be voting no.
Thank you, Councilmember. Could always take other action later, though, too. Don't have to do it all in one meeting. Anyone else? All right, I look forward to this ribbon-cutting. It's going to be, this will be great. Thank you, Skiin, for helping as well, and having a sister here again in town will be tremendous. And, you know, like, who knows? Councilmember Cantino, you know, he did a lot on the avenue. Improvements will be made. There'll be opportunity to consider things in the future as well, so who knows? All right, all in favor of this item indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Pro.
All right.
Mayor six one.
Thank you. And item number five, consideration of approving a contract Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $103,200 for purpose of promoting tourism. Julie.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The fiscal year 2011-12 budget included an appropriation to fund the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce Tourism Bureau in the amount of $103,200 for the purpose of promoting tourism in Fountain Hills. Members of the Budget Committee and staff have worked with the chamber to create the scope of work that's before you for the current fiscal year. The scope includes staffing, materials, equipment, and professional management of a tourism program focusing on local, regional, and national selected markets for visitors to Fountain Hills, media campaign including visitors' guides, social media to achieve $5 in media value for every dollar invested, to develop and promote an image branding campaign, to develop a website for Fountain Hills destination area, niche market brochures, listing the town as a sponsor of all materials as appropriate, and a report on the progress made on each scope of service item in the mid-year and year-end reports. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Julie. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
All right, council, will you get a motion on this item? Mayor, move to approve professional service agreement between the town of Fountain Hills and the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce Tourism.
Second.
All right, good. All right, discussion questions on the contract, the one-year agreement? Councilmember Hanson.
Are the other contract services required by annual reporting as well?
I don't know. Andrew, reporting, I think, isn't the, seems like the Boys and Girls Club did quarterly?
I don't recall the frequency of the reporting, but they all have a reporting requirement of some sort, if I remember correctly. I just think, I don't know if it's exactly the same for each one. I think it might be quarterly for Boys and Girls.
I remember, I mean, we were getting quarterly from the chamber, from tourism, previously. This one's requiring twice a year?
That's correct.
Would you like to have the quarterly again?
No, that's fine. I was just thought consistency would be good if all the contracts were similar in reporting.
Yeah, they're delivering different services, but I'm not sure why we could, why reporting had to be, unless we're, I've agreed to pay out monthly instead of quarterly, or how are we paying out on this one? Or, Julia, some feedback?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Depending on what the scope of work was with the contract would depend on how they were repaid. The Boys and Girls Club is quarterly, based on their quarterly report. The Food Bank, I believe, is quarterly in advance. The theater is based on their performances because there were specific performances that the town was sponsoring. So, it would depend on what the scope was, is when we would pay them and when their report would be due.
Okay. And what's the compensation, the payout schedule for the, for tourism?
Mayor, members of the council, the payout schedule for the tourism is they have submitted their billings already, and if it's approved tonight, they would get their first check tomorrow.
Okay, is that, so then they'll get a payment now and then a payment six months from now, or towards the end of the contract, or?
Mayor, members of the council, the way it has worked previously, and I would assume would be the same, is as soon as they submit invoices for the items listed is when they would be reimbursed.
Okay, so they could get reimbursed?
Correct.
Okay, good. Okay, council, I know this one we talked about probably more than some of the others related, because we're obviously passionate about letting people know about Fountain Hills in particular, and some service, some deliverables we are looking for. Does this satisfy you for this year?
Mayor.
And, Councilmember Elke?
You know, I think, I think it does this year, and this is just one small step in the direction of the branding, and I know Mr. McDermott's here from tourism, but, you know, the amount of money that we're contributing this year, $103,200, not a considerable amount when you compare us with other cities and towns as far as marketing's concerned. So, I think this is one small step in the direction of, the new direction that I've seen as far as the branding's concerned, and I'm really looking forward to what tourism's going to be able to deliver, and really kind of excited about that.
Good. Mark, do you want to share anything with council? As you come up, I know there's, you know, one thing related to the branding that we talked about, probably outside of council meetings, over the All-American Grill, that process, or maybe a B-VAC, or who knows, you know, somewhere around town, is that our communication with council, and I think could be better with the Tourism Bureau, so that we're engaged on the front end, with branding being a good example, kind of started down the road and then brought council in. So, I think it'd be beneficial to all parties to get us involved, but we've already talked about that. I just wanted to share with you tonight, and council acknowledged that we've talked about that, and, but, anything else you wish to share?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. My name is Mark McDermott. I'm the director of the Visitors Bureau for the Chamber of Commerce. I wasn't prepared to say anything, but I'm happy to respond, Mayor. First of all, I very much appreciate, as Councilman Elke has alluded to, the support for the new direction in the branding and the things that we are all looking forward to being able to do together. It does represent, to us at the Visitors Bureau, a little bit of a paradigm shift from what we've been doing in the past, focusing strictly on tourism, to more focusing strictly on destination for all aspects of the destination, whether it's tourism, whether it's business development, economic development, civic pride engagement by our citizens, or whatever it may be. So, with that, from that respect, absolutely, and before, we have welcomed council members on our advisory council. Councilmember Hanson has served on it. Councilmember Cantino has served on it. Councilmember McMahon's served on it before. So, we've always had engagement, but we're very excited about this whole new approach that we're taking. We think it's going to do great things for bringing the town and the chamber together with a, with a really good collaborative mission to take a whole new image and brand for our community out there. And, yes, I'm very excited about the opportunity to have much more open and engaged communication between all members of council and town staff as well, and, and the chamber and the Visitors Bureau with regard to what we're doing. So, yeah, this is exciting.
And I think you made a, you made a number of excellent points there, Mr. McDermott, about communication and open dialogue and discussion. Certainly, there's history to me in the town, and the chamber goes back many years, and we're all partners in the same community. So, I would encourage you in the chamber not to hesitate to contact town staff to, if there's ever an opportunity that you want to come in and give us an update, and certainly give the residents an update as to what's going on as far as tourism's concerned. Please don't hesitate to do so, especially if there's additional opportunities even during the course of the fiscal year that you believe that the council may be interested in, that would require perhaps even additional funding, at least making us aware so that we know things that we can build on. Certainly, it's tough financial times right now, so it'd be very difficult, but I think dialogue and discussion and openness is very important, and I'm very encouraged by the discussions that we've had, not only at B-VAC, but of course during council meetings. Thank you.
Councilman Elke, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate those comments very much. Certainly, we will be non-hesitant to reach out to any council members, to all of you for input and assistance. The same goes the other way around. If there are any things that you feel we can be doing differently or better, we welcome the input as well. Obviously, you'll be getting reports on what we're doing, and I very much appreciate the suggestion, and I've got lots of ideas, that there may be some things that we could, we could talk about collaborating on as we go through the balance of this fiscal year and on into the future with the related cost issues as, as those are concerned. So, thank you very much.
Mayor.
Councilmember Hanson.
I would just want to commend Mark and, and his, his people on the quarterly reports that they have done over the last few years, because that's what really piqued my interest. They were so complete, and there was so much information in them, and that's when I started attending the meetings as well. So, they've done a really good job in their quarterly reports in the past.
Mark, and, you know, now that we've gotten through this process, and we have a year now ahead of us where we can, you know, get ready for the next year's, you know, push for tourism. I wanted you to, before you leave, I wouldn't mind if you can share a little bit about American Trails, the big win that you guys have coming up. Isn't that, is that what it's called?
It's the American Trails Symposium. Thank you, yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a, it's kind of exciting. We collaborated on a, on a formal bid with the Fort Middelley Yavapai Nation, the Radisson Hotel, and other agencies within the state, most notably the State Parks Department, Bureau of Land Management, and the CAP, Central Arizona Project. For this rather large convention for our community, it'll be about 800 people, we feel. We'll fill every hotel in Fountain Hills, as well as the Radisson over there. It's the American Trails Symposium. It's a national convention. Actually, it's an international convention, and they've renamed it to the International Trails Symposium. It basically brings together enthusiasts of outdoor recreation, trails, hiking, biking, horseback riding, all that, all that you do in the great outdoors, of which this is one of the principal assets of Fountain Hills and Fort Middelley, obviously. So, it's, it's going to take place in April of 2013, so we've got a little planning time, but there are, the planning activity is already actively underway. In fact, there was a meeting today, a conference call meeting that we're all on with regard to the planning, the host committee, the planning for that. I would like to see us, and we will go forward, put together a host committee of individuals from within Fountain Hills to work on this, because what they do when they come into communities like this, it's not a normal convention. They actually engage themselves in the communities. They look for things that they can do with regard to trails and the outdoor environment to help improve your situation there. They've gone into communities at these conventions and built new trails, or improved trailheads, or done all kinds of other things. And one of the other big advantages of this is that it's an international audience that we're talking to. Maybe only 800 people will come here. They're hoping for 1,000. We'll see what happens, but, but in the meantime, for the next year and a half or so, as we're promoting this thing, we'll be very prominent on the American Trails website as the site for the 2013, the next convention, and they get over a million hits a month on that, on that website. So, it's huge in terms of visibility that we'll gain just from being on the website as the upcoming site. And then we'll be able to plug in stories and, and ideas and thoughts of things to see and do, build upon the types of things that we like to see them do when they're here. So, really, we frankly got a lot of work ahead of us in terms of getting, getting, getting together, preparing for, and taking the best advantages as we can of this conference. So, this is a great example of how Fountain Hills and Fort Middelley can collaborate on these kinds of things to really, really engage and work, work proactive, or work effectively and efficiently to help both communities at one time and raise our profile together. So, thank you for that question, Jay. Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Number Leger.
Mark, thanks for all your work on this, and as I look at the staff presentation in front of me, I think for, for the dollars that we're investing in this, this project, we have 10 deliverables. My expectation is we will receive a lot, and we'll get a big bang out of our buck. And I'm looking forward to ROI. And I know that the branding is something that we've individually had an opportunity to look at, and along the lines of what Councilman Elke was stating with respect to updates. I'm hoping as we move to the next stage in branding, that there will be an opportunity to present before us, because branding is, it's a very, very visual. And do we have anything scheduled, or?
For the next stage?
Yeah.
Not scheduled, but we need, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, council members, Councilmember Leger, we don't have anything actually scheduled, but we need to do that quickly.
Exactly.
Really do, because we've already sort of test marketed the brand with the article that's in Phoenix Magazine this month. The reaction has been very positive, so we look at that as, as sort of a, okay, this is going good. Let's go forward with this. So, we need to have the launch announcement. We'll, we'll put together a program for chamber and town personnel, folks, all the right people to be at, and, and at, what we need to do is sort of pull together the message that we want to convey there. Okay, we have this new brand, and here's the logo, but now what are we going to do to launch this logo, and what's it going to take, and, and what's going to make it really work efficiently and effectively? So, so we need to do that relatively soon, because we've got some things coming up that we need to put it on as well, so.
Absolutely. And, Mayor, if I may, and I think that's really important, because as, as we've had discussions amongst council and individually with, with chamber and through Business Vitality Advisory Committees and such. That there's a perception in the community, and I've heard this a lot, that the branding is, is, is narrow. And as you stated earlier in your presentation, it's really, the bandwidth is quite wide and significant. And, and as I've stated to you, I'm impressed with it, because it's marketing Fountain Hills. It's branding Fountain Hills. So, anybody that's involved in Fountain Hills benefits from it, whether you're a contractor, it, it, it markets what a wonderful place to live. If you're in business, so forth and so on. So, I think it'd be really important if we can schedule something before council, so it can be broadcast on Channel 11, so folks can see, you know, what it is and, and what we're spending taxpayers' money on. Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Anyone else? The other thing I want to share is the Visitors Bureau meeting that I went to. I was really excited to see a few more of the hotels there, and the collaboration with them is super important, and I know by them being there, they felt comfortable coming and invited, and so that was great to see. But this International Trails Symposium, this maybe is kind of like our Olympics, you know? I mean, we certainly are a outdoor Mecca.
Right.
That's still yet to be discovered by a whole lot of folks. So, this northern desert, and obviously our neighbors at Fort Middelley with their outdoor adventures, and our trails, and maybe there's some, maybe there's some things we could lead up to that April 2013 date that we want to, we want to reach and, and get to. Obviously, in advance of that would be best, and, and even following up that event or that symposium, other symposiums or other outdoor activities or, and conferences might make a lot of sense on, on the, on the trail of the International Trails Symposium, on the tail end of the Trail Symposium. So, you know, like the Olympics in, in Salt Lake, you know, they've had numbers of things that have now followed after the Olympics, and not that we're building a village, well, maybe you could build a village, an International Trails Village.
I can think of 14 names that I'd like to use.
Yeah, so, so that, you know, let's, let's stay engaged with one another and not find ourselves in, you know, November 2012, where they're back against the wall, and, and not miss an opportunity here, because it's a great win that you guys answered the RFP and were able to collaborate and win. So, let's make the most of that one. That's, that's huge.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And it is huge, and quite frankly, there's a lot of work that has to be done, including quite a bit of fundraising that has to be done that we basically committed to helping them make happen. So, we've all got to pull together over the next year and a half and help make a lot of things happen, but so much can happen to benefit this community that it's going to be a great worthwhile undertaking. So, thank you for your understanding and appreciation of that.
All right, good, Mark. Anything else? I think we've got our motions, all ready to vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor seven zero.
All right, awesome. Thanks, Mark. Thanks for serving us.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
All right, next item, quarterly report on progress. Julie.
Thank you, Mayor. The goals report is included in the packet and is also available on the website, and with the mayor's permission, I'd just like to go over some of the highlights of that report.
Please.
Specifically with the strategic value of civility. One of the initiatives was to build on the success of the current service events that the town conducts, and we held the first Fountain Hills Make a Difference Day, which was a huge success. We had over 100 volunteers that helped Fountain Hills citizens with a variety of projects, such as building a wheelchair ramp, painting, stucco, et cetera. This was a very successful event, and the credit goes to our volunteer coordinator, Heather Ware, and the great volunteers who pitched in. We plan on making this an annual event. Another initiative was to solicit public feedback, and we have made improvements to the town's website and other social media for public input. We have held three citizen town halls for residents to come in and talk to any member of staff about any issues or questions they may have. On the environmental stewardship value, the town is in the process of installing a new energy management system that will implement energy-saving measures that can be measured. Another sustainable practice is the promotion of water conservation through the Water Use It Wisely campaign, and anybody that came in the front lobby can see those bottles that are stacked up as a display, and that is the average household consumption. On the environmental stewardship, the town is in the process, whoops, sorry. Under civic responsibility, one of the initiatives is to communicate the role of local government. The town will be conducting the Second Annual Citizens Academy in February at the Community Center, and that includes presentations from all of the departments. Citizens are encouraged to register for these classes and learn about how their government works. Under education, learning, and culture, the town has supported the Public Art Walk and is partnering with Fort Middelley Yavapai Nation on potential joint programs and special events. On economic vitality, the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission and the chamber are working on creating a brand to market Fountain Hills. An effort to promote retention of businesses in Fountain Hills is moving forward with an outreach plan in coordination with the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, or GPEC, to gather information from our existing successful businesses to help define and refine the competitive advantages of a Fountain Hills location. And then finally, under recreational opportunities, the initiative is to provide an interconnected multi-use trail and bicycle system that's moving forward with the Urban Trails Plan that will be presented to the town council during the December work study. That concludes my presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, excellent. Council, any questions on the quarterly goals? Thanks a bunch, Julie. Next item is council discussion direction to interim Town Manager, Finance Director. Nothing there. Summary of council request, report on recent activities. Anything further, Julie?
Mayor, just to schedule a tourism presentation to the council.
All right, excellent. And I know we have a couple things. Councilmember Dick, you attended the National League of Cities. Anything to report?
Well, Mayor, thank you. Not, not specifically just that the, the theme was infrastructure. It was really interesting, and I'll try to get more information to you. I just wanted to ask you how the mobile workshops went, because Fountain Hills was featured featured at, for the National League as a kind of a field trip, and you were.
I did everything.
You did it all.
I carried it all, yeah. Now, the staff did an awesome job. So council probably knows, or seen an email. We apparently applied to be on the National League of Cities Mobile Tour years, probably, I don't know, a year and a half ago, and there, you know, it was a big deal. Phoenix won the conference. It's so often on the East Coast, you know, or not this side of the Mississippi. So National League of Cities, which obviously, we're not, we're not a member. We may have been when we applied. I don't believe we're a member now. We were awarded the Mobile Tour, and it did cost us two thousand dollars, and we agreed to pay that, and I think that's how we, how we realized we were gonna be on a Mobile Tour, is we received an invoice. Apparently, you know, our prior town manager and perhaps Katie Decker were our contacts at the time, so contacts didn't come through to the town until one of the staff members received a invoice with about ten days to go before the tour was to show up in Fountain Hills. So the staff did an amazing job, and pulled together, and we just, we're debating, you know, are we gonna move forward with this, and talked about the number of guests, you know? If we don't get a good number of guests, then let's just kind of cancel it. But the guest list grew and grew and grew, and so we said, okay, let's go for it, and staff pulled together a great tour, a great format. Of course, the, the whole format was to, or the whole program was to emphasize the experience that our volunteers have, and they adhere in Fountain Hills. So of course, the volunteers, for the most part, led the presentation, Jerry Butler and Jerry Miles and Jenny Willigrod and, and other volunteers related to the greening. We, of course, toured, showed them about our downtown vision plan, but they really got into the public art, was a big, big focus of the tour, and also the downtown greening effort and the volunteer-led fundraising and projects. So they really got a lot out of it. It was about, they're in town for a little over three hours, and I think it was a Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday last week, and Kathy Worrell, Parks and Rec, jumped on one bus down at the Civic Center, and I jumped on the other and talked to them for about fifty minutes on the way down here, explaining what we're passing and what they're about to see, and I think Kathy had the fun bus, and I had the, I was the stiff, you know, there. And it was just a lot of fun for me to show off the town, and the volunteers, you know, that did the presentations right here in council, did a great job with the tech, you know, using technology here, and went down from here over to this Centennial Circle, where they looked at some of the artwork, and we had Docent give them a tour. It was tremendous. We had to do kind of abbreviated one, they didn't have a lot of time, then came back in here for Jerry Butler to do his greening presentation, and then prior to that, Jerry Miles gave a great public art presentation. And so Jerry Butler finished, we went down to the performance pad, and then walked along the fountain, just as it was going up, on the path over to the Veterans Memorial, and observed a bunch of other, you know, elements in the park related to the greening and some more public art. So by the time they got to the buses, they were, their jaws were on the ground. They, they thought we were the luckiest people in the world in Fountain Hills, and they, they have a lot to take back, a lot of ideas, and you take a lot of things for granted living here all the time, and you could just see it through their comments and their experiences about how fortunate we are to live here in Fountain Hills, and how do we get volunteers to do all these things and stay engaged? And, you know, in part, I said, well, many of the volunteers know if they don't do it, it's not gonna get done. We really empower our people to do things, and the town's not gonna always do everything for them, and that really gives them the ownership and the, the right to do these things. And I said, the other things is the people just love their community and feel they can make a difference, and so we're really fortunate there. Some of the things they shared, there's a lot of them were from the Midwest, northeast and southeast part of the country, because they're dealing with a lot of the older infrastructure and older buildings. They've got buildings that are two hundred years old, that are starting to fall down, there's no money, there's, you know, decreasing revenues, and they're trying to deal with just keeping buildings standing up, and that was the perspective that they brought here with us, and along with their, their amazement at the volunteers. It just gave me that perception of how fortunate we are to, to have what we have and to keep building upon the good stuff we have, because literally, their chins were on the ground when they left. They were like, oh, my gosh. So.
We walked them all over. They were probably tired.
They were tired. They got, it was a perfect day. It was so beautiful. And of course, gave them plenty of water, and I am very confident many, many of them will come back as visitors, just to check it out and, and vacation out here, as well as, of course, they're, they were largely elected officials from other states, and they know a lot of folks. So I think, you know, Mark McDermott and his websites and other things will probably get a lot of hits from, from those folks, and we did follow it up with an email to them, thanking them and the offering to stay in touch, and shared some of the pictures that, that we took while they were here. So it was a lot of hectic action, but I think it, it's gonna pay off for us, and it was, it was a lot of fun to show off Fountain Hills. So I think it was the highlight of their trip to Arizona. So that's what I had to share with the National League of Cities. But thanks for going, look forward to hearing, you know, more about what you, what you took